Be completed as dialed. Please consult... Welcome to WebEx. Enter your access code or meeting number followed by pound. Enter your attendee ID number followed by pound. If you do not know your attendee number... You are the first person to join the meeting. Please stand by.
Good afternoon.
Howdy.
I remembered to push the video button this time.
I remembered to push the video button this time.
Hello, good afternoon. Just checking my audio. Sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. It is four o'clock. And so pursuant to section 54956 of the California Government Code, a special meeting of the City Council is hereby called for 4:00 PM on Thursday, February 8, 2021. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Rary?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez? Vice Mayor Rodriguez, I think you were on mute, but I saw you there.
Yeah, I'm here. You hear me?
Yes, now I can, thank you. Mayor Bryant?
Okay.
Here. We have all in attendance. We do have a quorum. So we'll begin the meeting. And at this time, we will open public comments. And I'll turn it to Margaret.
Mayor, really quick. Can I say something real quick, Mayor? A little bit like I should say first when I talk to you today. I have to be in another firing position at six fifteen. Can you hear me?
You're really breaking up. I can hear you now.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Having to use my phone and having problems with my computer and get my phone. Can you hear me?
I hear you well.
Okay. So I was saying from the beginning of the meeting, at six fifteen, I have to jump into another meeting for about 10 minutes. So I just wanted, if the meeting runs over six, about six, six fifteen, I have to jump into another meeting for about 10 minutes. I apologize for that, but I have to do a quick little presentation for my job. So I just want to let you know ahead of time. Obviously, this may not go that long. In talking with the city manager, if we follow what we need to do, and then hopefully I won't have to worry about this, okay?
Okay, thanks for the update.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Margaret?
Before we start, I'd like to make an announcement that immediately following public comment portion of the agenda, the WebEx link will no longer be active and the interviews will only be streamed on the city's meeting streaming software located on the City Council Agenda page. Also, please be advised that the PDF of the Agenda packet, the Agenda items have been misnumbered. Items three and four are labeled as one and two. And at this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items that are on the special meeting agenda. I received no written comments on this item prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak under public comment, please use the raise your hand feature in WebEx, and I will call your name if provided, and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after that time has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the City Council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda. If appropriate, staff will follow up on them. And at this time, I'm not seeing any hands raised for this item. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
Thank you. So at this time, then, we will close public comments. And we will take a five-minute recess so that we can move to the other link. Members of the public may move to the video feed on the city's website to view the remainder of the meeting. So at this time, we are in recess to go on to the other link.
Do we have to go on to the link, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have not received another link. I've only gotten the first one.
None of us have received the other link?
It shouldn't have just been. It should have just been sent, so if everybody could just check their email quickly.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at www webex.com. Welcome to WebEx. Enter your. Enter your attendee ID number, followed by.
Transparency with that. I think the other option or the other alternative, if someone doesn't want to, they can just provide you with the names during the meeting. There's a place on the agenda for that where you can either email the information to Margaret or just say which names when you're called on that you'd like to advance for the mission appointment. For the interviews.
Either way is fine with me.
I think you can do both, Mr. Mayor. The option up to the council how they'd like to convey the information.
Council, do you have a preference?
Would it be for the sake of potentially like taking a little more time to review the names? An effect of her?
I wasn't sure the motivation behind it. But if someone would prefer to email the information to Margaret, that's fine. If they prefer to say it to Margaret, that's fine as well. And primarily because the information will all be, everyone will see what all the council members' recommendations were on one sheet of paper. So it's not a secret ballot or anything. It will be transparent. It just won't occur in real time. It's provided email for some people.
So I can give you the background to this because it's my recommendation. When Vice Mayor Barr left and we did the appointment process, we interviewed all the candidates. And at the end, we were either given a slip of paper with all the names on and we circled the name that we wanted and turned it all in. and we circled the name that we wanted, and turned it all into Margaret's. Margaret then went through them all, tallied them up, and gave an announcement of what the results were. And it would continue to do that until we finally got vote, it only took one time, and, and there was a, you know, a majority had voted. So, that was the reason why I had suggested it, because it was something that had been done in the past. I didn't say to email it, I actually had said to go into the message where you can message just the host, and that way it's immediate, instead of waiting for an email to come in on the other side. Except, I'm not seeing that we have that capability in this one. Um, we have notes, and we have participants, but we don't have the message box here. Anyway, that was why I came up.
Well, that, that certainly works for me, um, however, you know, the majority, however council wants to do it.
Would this do anything to help if, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez ends up having to leave? I mean, if we, um, would it save a little time?
I think it would save, probably.
Well, I, go ahead, uh, Damian.
As I said, if, if, if some members want to say it verbally, that's fine. If some members want to email it, or put it through the, the chat feature, that's fine. It just, the main rea-, the main thing is, is that all the information, everyone will see what the council members' choices were. So, that, that's the most important thing, is the public sees who everyone selected, and that, that will be available. So, as long as the information gets conveyed, and, and we have that, we should be fine. So, I don't, don't need to do one or the other, I think either one, either method would be fine. Um, and that will, that will be on your, either first agenda item once, once, uh, Vice Mayor Rodriguez gets back on the line.
So, what, I guess Karen's question, and, I mean, it doesn't matter to me what we do, but why could it be anonymous when they did the vice mayor voting, but not in this case?
It, it wasn't anonymous, all the results were, were known to the public. It just, it was just, they, they did it by ballot, all the ballots were read to the public, so it was not, the ultimate result in how everyone voted was public information.
But, did you know who voted for who?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that was for both the, who we're going to move ahead, and who our final vote was for?
For, for tonight, for tonight, sorry for all this confusion, for tonight, it's just for who you'd like to interview for the planning commission. Um, for, for the other item, I believe it is, that, that information will be just explained during the meeting, who you want-
Right.
-who you recommend to be appointed. So, that was-
I didn't ask my question very well, sorry. I was talking about, uh, when, um, Councilmember Rary was talking about before, when everything was compiled and then moved forward, was, was everything public in the initial, here's who I want to move forward, and the final vote? At that time?
Just the final vote. And it, and it was really just one round of voting, um-
So, that's, that's the difference then?
Well, the result, the result is the same, the public sees who everyone, who everyone either voted for, you know, a few years ago, or who everyone would like to move forward, uh, in the interview process. So, the public will see who everyone has selected, and which specific council members selected which individuals to move forward.
Thank you, this is also new.
And, and as I said, just a few minutes, so this process that we're doing right now is new for us as well, and so we're, we're, we're still working out some of the, the bumps.
And I have an update, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez is in the lobby, so he's on, but Margaret has moved into the breakout room, but he's not showing up. So, she shows him as in our breakout session, but he is clearly not here.
I think I'm going to remove- I'm gonna click the remove button, and see if I can, um, exchange him back in there. We'll try it again.
Okay. And then Karen just wanted to make it known, if you're not aware, that your camera is not showing up.
Mine?
There we go. Sorry about that. I was hanging out with all the candidates. I thought I was actually gonna interview for something.
You're back, Karen.
I was trying to get prepared, Mayor. Okay.
So, now, it appears that all the council members are present. Um, like to confirm that all the microphones are working, and that you're able to hear me and each other. And I think we, we can do that. Okay, so, at this time, we'll move to item five, selection of applicants to interview for the planning commission, at a special council meeting yet to be scheduled, and I will turn it to Terrence to provide the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council, thanks, uh, thanks for this time. The, um, on, at your, at your council meeting of January twenty-sixth, uh, Councilmember Mendoza requested that a future agenda item to review the process for the selection of members being, to be appointed to Arts, Parks, Recreation, and Planning Commission, um, take place. Um, and at the February ninth, uh, council meeting, direction was given to move forward with special meetings and a process to conduct, uh, commission applicants. Uh, we have, um, a number of applicants for the planning commission, so we're, tonight, we're hoping to get those numbers, uh, to get that number down to a more manageable level, um, by, by ascertaining the council's, um, level of, uh, interest in each candidate being on the planning commission. Um, so, the, what, what we're, what the plan here is for, is that each council member, um, and the mayor, will, will each choose the, their top five candidates to be interviewed from above, from above the, um, application submitted. There is no rank order in those five candidates, just five candidates that the, that the council, uh, wishes to interview and, and move on in the process. Um, as discussed, uh, those, those, the, the council's direction on which five can be, uh, can be sent by email, or verbally, depending on the, the preference of the City Council. But, the, uh, do want to be clear that the council's choice of which five will be, will be publicly known, um, so, in whichever way you bring it forward. I, I do want to indicate that I, just before the meeting, I received confirmation that Robert Ashen, um, due to other, other commitments, has decided not to continue forward. So, Robert Ashen is, is no longer, um, interested in continuing with the planning, uh, with the planning commission recruitment process. Um, so that brings us down to, um, a total of eight candidates. With that, um, with that, uh, this, this would be a time for the, for, for the, uh, council members to, um, send their five, their, their five candidates they want to interview to the city clerk, or, for the, if they desire, council members can simply read those, read the, the, theirs, uh, their, their choices to the city clerk, and she'll make a note of it.
I'm sorry, excuse me for breaking in, did we just lose Mayor Bryant?
I'm just here, I can still see me, but- Can, can you see me?
We can't see you, but we can hear you. Oh, there you are.
Great. So, um, Margaret, are you gonna poll the council members? Um, what, what is your, what is your thinking? Or, or is the mayor gonna do that?
I think the mayor could, and then they could just indicate whether they're going to, um, email me their choices, or provide them to me.
Also, Terrence, if you could, or Margaret, since we lost, uh, one of the applicants, um, could you verbally list, and na-, name the applicants that are still a part of the pool?
Absolutely, I'm happy to do that. Um, the, the applicants that are, that are still interested, that continue to be interested are, in alphabetical order, um, Jim Barnett, Derek Bullington, Emily Cross, David Doulter, Fay Maloney, Dolly Marquez, David Sparling, and Cindiana Todor.
Thank you.
Of course. So, Mr. Mayor, you can poll, you can poll the, you can poll the council members on, on whether they want to send it by email, or verbally, uh, verbally report?
Um, okay, um, Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah, um, my list is David Doulter, David Sparling, Derek Bullington, Cindiana Todor, and Dolly Marquez, and I will follow up with an email to Margaret.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Meyer?
My list is David Doulter, David Sparling, Cindiana Todor, James Barnett Jr., and Derek Bullington.
Councilmember Rary?
Well, I forwarded mine, I can go back in there and look as well. Well, why don't we just go on to Johnny, 'cause I forwarded mine.
Okay. Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'll do, uh, Fay Maloney, uh, David, uh, Doulter, Emily Cross, and David, uh, Sparling.
Okay, you only have four?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Uh, then I will also, uh, give my list verbally, uh, David Doulter, Fay Maloney, Emily Cross, David Sparling, and Derek Bullington.
I'm sorry, I don't think I was, um, writing fast enough. Could you repeat yours, Mayor?
Yes. Uh, David Doulter-
Okay.
Fay Maloney, Emily Cross, David Sparling, and Derek Bullington.
Okay, and if, um, I think Councilmember Rary emailed hers, I have Councilmem-, Vice Mayor Rodriguez's, Councilmember Mendoza was going to email hers, and-
I did.
If Councilmember Meyer could give me her list one more time?
Would you prefer that I email it? I'm happy to do that.
That would be fantastic, thank you, and then I'll just take my moment to tally.
Okay.
Well, Margaret is tallying, just want to indicate, we have, we get to select a, um, a, a date for that meeting, we are, you, you should have a request for some locations already, if, uh, if not, you'll be getting them soon, so, but there is no date, uh, for, for the benefit of the council and the public.
I thought there was.
There's, may, we've gone with, um, March third, at four P.M. Sorry.
I stand, I stand corrected.
Margaret, I just emailed mine.
Thank you.
Are we waiting on something?
Yes, we're waiting for Margaret to tabulate it, uh-
Oh.
To see who all gets recommended to move forward.
My apologies, it'll be just a moment, I probably should have had hold music.
And while we're waiting, just want to confirm with the council that you want to do a similar process with each council member submitting a list of potential questions for the planning commission interviews? And if that's the case, then we'll look for those, uh, questions, again, twenty-four hours before that meeting on March third, as scheduled.
Is that the preference of council? I, I think it was already stated before, but-
Just wanted to confirm.
Does that process work for the council?
That, that works, can we get them, um, confirm the list sent to us a little bit earlier? Before this meeting, that they were really, um, last minute, I mean, this is all a new process, but-
The list of questions?
Yeah. The final list, yeah.
But, Dan, we were trying to not get them out too soon, to-
Oh, okay.
-persuade the community and confidentiality you guys had asked for.
Yeah. I get it, I get it. I just was printing time.
Yep, we can get out a little earlier. Thank you.
I'm gonna share my screen, and if you can just, um, verify that I have everybody's vote correct, um, or choice. Oops. And I disappeared from the screen, if you can see that, and, um-
Margaret, could you remove the paragraph signs for people to see?
Oh, sorry, thank you. Um-
Thank you.
If I can find it in here, sorry. There you go. There we go.
There we go.
Margaret, is that X is the one that we selected, right?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, 'cause there was some squares on it. Okay. Thank you.
So, at this point, it looks like the, um, commissioners, the person, the people that would move forward in the interview process would be Derek Bullington, Emily Cross, David Doulter, Fay Maloney, David Sparling, and Cindiana Todor. Does that look correct to everybody with your choices?
So, how many will be moving forward?
That would be, that would be seven.
Six, now?
Six.
One, two, three.
Six.
Six.
So, we, we were moving forward with six?
Correct. And I can highlight the six. Oops. There. So, those are the six that would be moved forward in the interview process.
Did this process work for everyone? Is this what you'd like to see?
This is awesome.
Okay, great.
Okay. Stop sharing that.
So, again, on March third, you'll, you'll interview these six candidates? Um, the, and, we need the, and we need a, a, a que-, a set of three questions from each council member?
Sorry, something is going on with Ca-, with, uh, Councilmember Rary.
It shows that Councilmember Rary is unmuted, but we're unable to hear her.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay. So, I had also had Jim Barnett on it.
So, I'll reshare that screen, then that has, that has Jim Barnett with two, and that means we will be interviewing seven. My apologies.
Great, so, um, a- as indicated, please send your, um, your questions, your ranked questions, one through three. Great. So, um, a- as indicated, please send your, um, your questions, your ranked questions, one through three, um, in case there are a couple, in case there are duplicate questions, it will allow us to move forward. And, um, based on the process that you've approved, we'll be, we'll be interviewing those seven candidates in, on, on March 3rd. Are there any questions or comments for staff?
Nope. Thank, thank you for the fast turnaround. Thank you for Margaret and her staff and everyone for all of the, the, the heavy lifting on this to get this done. I think this is a, a great process. I'm really looking forward to, to the, the, the public being able to be a part of this, the council being able to see everything. It just makes everything a lot more transparent, so...
Great.
Looking forward to move forward. So, thank you. Um, so at this time, then, we will move on to item six, interviews and selection appointment of commissioners to the Arts Commission and selection of commissioners to the Park and Recreation Commission. And so now it's time to hold the interviews for arts commissioners and park and recreation commissioners. Uh, and I'm gonna ask Parks and Rec Director Bruce Mulder to explain this part of the process. So, Bruce?
All right. Good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. So, I'm just gonna read through again the, the process before we start the interview. So, um, just a summary quickly of, of what council gave direction to, on how to do this. So, pursuant to the process rules that the council previously agreed to, we start with the Arts Commission interviews. Prior to the meeting, the mayor and council provided the city clerk with questions to ask the applicants. Each applicant will be asked the same five questions, and will have up to three minutes to answer each question. Limited follow-up questions may be permitted by the mayor based on available time. The applicants are in a separate breakout room that does not permit them to listen to another applicant's responses. They are also on the honor system that they will not be using another device to listen to another applicant's responses. Once interviews have been, have concluded, there will be an opportunity for the council to discuss the candidates. When any discussion has concluded, each council member will be asked to verbally provide the mayor with their choices for the two positions in order from first to last. The mayor will then provide his two recommendations from first to last to the council for appointment to the Arts Commission. The council will then hold individual votes on each of the mayor's recommended appointments. If a recommended applicant receives three votes, then he or she is appointed to the Arts Commission for the recommended term. If less than two applicants are appointed to the Arts Commission, then the mayor may recommend appointing another applicant tonight or request that the opening be re-advertised. The selection process will be the same for the Park and Rec Commission, however, because the formal Park and Rec Commission appointments must be, must occur at a regular city council meeting, the mayor's recommendation, recommendation will be that the selected applicant's names be brought to the council for the formal appointment at the meeting on February 23. Finally, this is the first time that we are using this type of system, so we ask for your understanding. Um, as we've already had a few little hiccups, and we may have some more, so, uh, but, but we're working through it. Um, the city clerk has drawn the applicant's names in random order, and they will now be brought into the interview breakout room one at a time. Um, but before we do that, I just want to pause, um, just to make sure if there's any questions here at the last minute before we begin. Otherwise, if council is ready, um, I'm sure that our interview isn't ready to go as well.
Do you have any questions? Um, if not, okay. Uh, Bruce, I do have one question. Uh, there was an applicant that applied for both planning and arts, uh, I'm s-- not, not planning, I'm sorry, Parks and Rec and Arts Commission. And what is the process that we're going to use uh, if we would happen to choose that one for both during the interview process?
Uh, well, I, you may just want to ask, I mean, if, if she is chosen for both, um, it's really up to the council to decide where they want to appoint that person. Uh, however, you know, you may want to ask the person if, if they have a, a preference. Um, they are scheduled to be interviewed for both, just out of transparency, to ask the same questions of both. So, that person, the way it's set up, will be interviewed twice this evening. And I see Damian is popping up, so I will defer to him.
I, I, I believe there's gonna be a challenge with, with proceeding, if, because of the order we're doing this, if the candidate is selected for the Arts Commission, they'll be appointed to the Arts Commission tonight. Uh, you, you, they wouldn't, at that point, I don't believe they would proceed with an interview for the Parks and Recreation Commission because they will have already been appointed to the commission unless the council wants someone to hold two, seats on two different commissions. Um, and so just that, just, uh, uh, that may be a follow-up question, um, i- if, if we get to a point where you think it should be asked whether or not they want, i- if, if they, if they get appointed to the Arts Commission, would they rather be appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission? Because once you appoint them to the Arts Commission, then I don't believe then they'd be interviewed for the next commission.
Okay. Is, is there any clarifying questions? Yes, council.
I don't see the hand right now. Um, the Parks and Rec, uh, position that's for one year, i- is there any, is there any, um, sort of calls for how to, how to put a person into that role in comparison with the others? I mean, do we just vote based on who we think we want in their locker, or how does that work?
Yeah, so, um, you have, you are selecting three people to the Park and Rec Commission, so, um, with your, your first number-one person being your top, your, your second, and then your third. So, I think the best way to do that is people's third choice would be the one that would go to that one-year position. Um, there is the understanding that that position will, um, people will be able to reapply for that after the, that one-year term is done. So, um, whoever is selected to that will be able to reapply, um, along with other applicants as well. So, Damian, did I say that correctly?
Y- yes, you did, Bruce. Um, it, it is, it would seem to work that it's, that your third choice is the one-year term, but as Bruce said, there's nothing that precludes the council in a year from reappointing that person to the commission for a full two-year term.
So, it, it's a three-year term, um, but I do have a question on that. I believe the, the way the policy is written, they can only serve for three terms. Didn't stipulate how many, how many years are in each term, but three terms before they would have to stay off for a year and then reapply if they want to be back on it after that. So, by applying, by allowing somebody to do that one-year term, they could really only apply for two, two, two more three-year terms. Is that correct?
I'm just looking at the Parks and Recreation Commission terms, and I, I believe, Councilmember Ray, you are correct on that. Uh, the commission member should be nominated by the mayor and be approved by the city council at a regularly scheduled council meeting for terms of three years. Terms of membership should be staggered. Um, and here we go, the maximum term for any commissioner is three consecutive three-year terms. So, it does specify the three-year terms.
Okay.
So, it would seem that they, that they would be able to do three consecutive three-year terms in addition to their, their one year that they would have.
Okay. That was the only clarifying that, that I just wanted to make sure.
No, thank you.
So, um, I also have a quick question regarding Mr. Derek Bullington. He's applying for both, um, Parks and Rec and for Planning Commission. So, if he's offered this role tonight, does he have to decide between this and coming back and interviewing? Or can he still interview even if he gets this, and maybe say, "I want that one more"?
For the Parks and Recreation Commission, you're not going to be making the appointments tonight.
Okay.
You'll be officially making the appointments tonight. It's just moving the names to the regular meeting to be appointed that on the 23rd. But with the interviews for the Planning Commission to be held on March 3rd, if Mr. Bullington moves forward tonight for Parks and Recreation and you, and you appoint him on, uh, February 23rd, then I don't, i- again, I, I don't know if, I don't believe there's any reason they both couldn't, you couldn't serve two commissions. That, I've never seen that since I've been here. So, if he's appointed to Parks and Recreation on, uh, February 23rd, I think that would likely preclude him from being appointed to the Planning Commission, um, for the, uh, for that March 3rd meeting, um, unless he resigns his Parks and Recreation seat and continues with, with the Planning Commission.
Well, that's what I was thinking. It should, on the 23rd, should we have a backup just in case? Because I don't know which one he wants more. If, and if he were to get both, it's, you know...
Well, that...
I, um, but just a point of clarification. When I was on the Park and Rec Commission and had been appointed to the Planning Commission, I was told I would need to resign my seat on the Park and Rec Commission in order to serve on the Planning Commission. Well, I, it appears that there's nothing that says that in, in the policy, but that was, that was what I was told back then. Um...
And Councilmember Ray, I haven't looked into the incompatibility of the two offices, and so there could be roles of both bodies where, where they are incompatible to hold both, both roles, where what you were told would have been correct. This, this question hasn't come up for me before, so I'd want to look into it. Um, but it, it, it would seem to me that, that, that you wouldn't be serving in two, two different roles, uh, in two different commissions.
Except for we finally have somebody from the Park Commission sitting on the Planning Commission fighting for Parks.
So, but, but I, that, as, as I indicated with the other candidate for the, um, Arts and Parks and Recreation Commission, that could be a follow-up question if there's a preference between the two commissions.
Okay, is that everyone's questions? Uh, and if they're all answered, then Bruce, uh, if you could bring in the first interviewee.
All right. I'm gonna rely on Margaret to help, um, facilitate this process, and, um, good luck with the interviews.
I'm moving Tammy Zucker into the, um, breakout session now, and, um, I will also be timing the, um, responses to the questions at three minutes. Okay, she's with us now.
Can we, we can't see her. Oh. Oh, there's, hi Tammy, how are you? Sorry, I couldn't see you there for a second. Um, thank you for your patience.
So, what, what we will do, uh, just so you'll know, uh, Tammy, is that each one of the council members will be asking you a question. Uh, you will answer it, uh, and then another council member will ask you the same question. Everyone gets asked the exact same questions, uh, so it, it is a, a fair process. So, at this time, I'll turn it to Councilmember Mendoza.
Hi again. Um, what do you suggest to solicit more public feedback on city projects, city art projects? Oh, we can't hear you. Can't hear you. We can't hear you, Tammy, I'm sorry. No. Margaret, is she unmuted?
She is unmuted. Um, she may need to call in. Do you, does your device have an audio option at the bottom of the screen? If you check the microphone next to that.
Sometimes it says switch audio. And Tammy, don't let this shake you because it's happening to all of us, so just let the nerves get to you because of the switch.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Okay, it was me. Sorry about that. So, uh, just like, one more time, just in case, um, what do you suggest to solicit more public feedback on city art projects? Um, God, there's a lot. Um, to solicit it, it, you know, um, I, I'm a people person, so I like to talk to people. I like to, um, my biggest key is communication. So, I mean, if that means individually, um, and I hope I'm answering this right, and I know there's not a right or wrong answer, um, but to actually let people know what we want to do in the future here at Brentwood, and the things that, um, we'd like to be putting out there that make, you know, the public aware of everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very short.
Should I just say, I need to be announced? I'm just gonna go. Um, hi.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us. I'm Susannah. Uh, do you feel it important to work with artists that are local when it comes to public art projects, and why are we not?
Um, do I feel, is it important that we deal with local artists? Is that the question? Um, it depends on the project, um, because a lot of people have great ideas, um, and they don't necessarily have to live local. It might be something that's been attracted somewhere else, and with a small town like us, um, it might make a big difference if we go abroad.
Hi, how are you?
Hello.
So, my multi-part question is, do you know how many public art pieces there are in Brentwood? How many have you been to? Which one is your favorite, and why? And what do you feel is miss, what do you feel is missing when it comes to public art in Brentwood? So, how many, how many public, do you know how many public art pieces there are?
Oh, my goodness, there's a lot. Um, I couldn't give you an exact number, but my, my actual favorite, my favorite one is, um, the one, and I want to say it's on Sand Creek, and it's a little girl holding a basket, and she's got her back facing towards us. And it's on the, um, on the, I think it's a utility box. I'm not sure. Um, but it, that's, that's one of my favorites. And then, like, um, just to add on to that, my second favorite is the one that they just painted over here, um, by, uh, Salgo, the solar pit place. That one, because it's a variety of, of nationalities that come together and are enjoying the outside world.
And what do you feel is missing in Brentwood as far as public art?
What do I feel that's missing? It's a good question, because I never thought of it. Um... I think that what's missing is, is what we, I've heard a lot of stories about what Brentwood used to be, um, how a small community, and, um, how everybody's all together. Some, I would have to say, maybe something from old school, um, something that would give a glimpse of what Brentwood used to be, and then what we can bring it back to. Thank you. You're welcome.
Johnny, we can't hear you.
Sorry. Hi Tammy.
Hi.
Here goes my long question. This position requires a commitment to attend monthly meetings on the third Wednesday of each month, and subcommittee meetings as necessary. Do you have any conflict that would make it difficult for you to serve as a commissioner?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
So, you'd be able to make that kind of commitment, then?
I, yes, I would definitely be able to make, even if it was twice a month. Um, I guess you want to say, for my advantage is being a business owner, so I kind of make my own schedule. Um, and it's very important to me to be able to be involved in something that has to do where, where I live at. And it means a lot. It means a lot to me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Joel, unmute.
Thank you. Um, hello Tammy. Uh, this is the last question, and, uh, this is the one that, um, might give you a little more insight into who you are, uh, for us, and it is, why do you think that you would make a good commission?
Why? Um, I don't want to sound biased or anything, but...
So...
I'm, um, I'm a people person. I'm very outgoing. I get along with everybody. Um, I, I love where I live, and I live where I love. And, um, being able to be a part... I love, and, um, being able to be a part of what happens here in Brentwood makes a big difference to me. It, uh, it's a joy, it, um, gives me a fresh feeling of, um, that I get to be a part of, and then instead of just living in Brentwood and having a business in Brentwood, it makes me feel that I can extend my, my vision with everybody and share my thoughts and my feelings with, with the committee, um, and, uh, mostly, like I mentioned, it's just, I am very much a people person, um, I get along with everybody, and I like to take in a lot of information, and, um, I don't like to exclude what anybody says, so, um, with that being said, it's just, it's important to me, it's really important.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At, at this point, uh, that's, that's all of the questions, and, uh-
Wow.
So, it, it's a usually quick and painless process, so we will let, uh, Bruce tell you what's going to happen next, uh, we will let you know.
Okay. Am I done right here? Or no?
So, uh, yes, Bru- Bruce, uh, just explain exactly what the process is for her right now.
Yeah, hi Tammy, so, um-
Hi.
The council is, uh, doing their interviews this evening, and, um, they, I think, uh, intend to make a decision, so we will, um, let you know, uh, probably as early as tomorrow, um, what the, uh, where they are with, uh, um, Arts Commission. So thank you again very much for your interest, and for your patience, and, uh, we will be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, bye.
The next applicant is Frank Littman, and I will bring Frank in now.
We'll just keep on going this way, feel free to go, it worked well, I thought.
He's in, it just may take a minute for him to show up, there he is.
Good evening Frank, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you Joel, it's my pleasure.
Just wanted to make sure you could hear all of us, so, uh, what, what is happening tonight is that, um, the council is going to be asking you, uh, five questions, each, everyone is asked the same exact questions, uh, and we will just, uh, take note of your answers, and at that point, uh, we will let you know, uh, tonight, we plan on making a decision, so, uh, if, if you can't hear us, if, if there's any issue with the communication because of Zoom, just let us know, and, uh, enjoy yourself.
Okay, thank you Joel.
Uh, Councilmember Mendoza, you're muted, it's your turn now.
I'm usually pretty good about that, sorry Frank. Um, what, what do you suggest to solicit more public feedback on the city art projects?
Could you say that again, please?
Sure. What do you suggest to solicit more public feedback on the city art projects? So how do we get more people to let us know what they want?
Well, um, for the Art Guild of Delta, which I'm president of, you know, I'm also kind of do a lot of publicity, and, um, we use, uh, social media, Fa- Facebook a lot, and some Instagram, and, you know, that's pretty, I mean, it's usually free unless you boost your post, and I found that to be pretty effective, um, I also, we also try to use our press releases and stuff, cause anything, and the, the president, um, very supportive of our projects, and, you know, usually post, um, the press releases, um, and since we're a nonprofit, you know, I work with all the local media, and they give us, you know, nonprofit rates, which saves money, um, I guess, uh, public service announcements might be one thing you could try, you know, it's a local, uh, TV station, um, they kind of forget about Brentwood as being so far east, you know, especially when I look at the weather report, like, okay, where is Brentwood, you know?
Perfect.
Those are some things that, you know, I would recommend.
Great, thank you.
Hi Frank.
Hi.
I'm Smol Meyer, good to you.
Good to see you.
Um, do you feel it important to work with artists that are local when it comes to public art projects? Uh, why or why not?
Well, I, again, um, I support artists wherever they are, and I, I support local artists because, uh, that's the community I live in, and, um, I think local artists are probably more passionate about Brentwood, you know, and are more of a vested interest in, you know, uh, supporting our town, and, uh, I certainly do, I've only been here four years, but this is my favorite place that I've ever lived, and, uh, you know, I just love the public art, um, and the commitment that, you know, Brentwood has to supporting art in general, so, um, I, you know, it's a, it's a beautiful place to live, and, uh, I think there's a strong, there is a lot, there are a lot of artists, you know, as I mentioned, I belong to the Art Guild, and we have over eighty members, sometimes as many as a hundred and twenty, so, and that's just, again, mostly from Brentwood, and we get a lot of support of, um, from local artists of our Banner Up program, um, you know, we don't restrict it to local artists, but, um, we do get a lot of support from them, so I, I think that, you know, it's a good, good relationship to, you know, for, you know, to reach out to local artists, and, you know, because they'll, I think, be, um, very supportive of the community, more of, again, like I said, a vested interest than somebody, say, living in Oakland.
Great, and can I go?
Sure.
All right, mine is a multi-pronged, and, um, so, uh, I'll read it all the way through, and then I'll go back, and, so, do you know how many public art pieces there are in Brentwood? How many have you been to? Which one is your favorite and why? And what do you feel is missing when it comes to public art in Brentwood? So, do you know how many art, public art pieces there are in Brentwood?
Um, I was just looking at the list, um, and it seemed like there were over eighty, maybe a hundred, um, it's on the, on, under the Arts Commission, um, I haven't been to all of them, but now that I know that there's a map, I, and, once I get my second vaccination for COVID, uh, I'm going to be exploring them, but, yeah, I mean, I've seen a lot of the artwork in the parks, uh, down in the Civic Center, uh, you know, on Oak Street, uh, and, yeah, I'm aware of a lot of them, and when I, you know, follow, uh, art projects that, you know, appear in the press, you know, that are coming up, like the Gateway Project, and, um, so, I, you know, I don't know the exact number, but, you know, it's such a surprise that there's so many, you know, that have been, uh, you know, scored, implemented by the city. Um, okay, that was the first part, what was the second?
So, of those three, of those being seen, which is your favorite and why?
Oh, well, I guess I would say the Civic Center, uh, I like the, the fountain, and the mural, I think, uh, you know, that's in that area, uh, because, again, it, uh, it shows a kind of the history and diversity of, of Brentwood, you know, the agriculture, and, you know, going up, uh, you know, and adding, uh, businesses and things like that, you know, there was kind of a mix between urban and rural, um, and it's a very peaceful scene.
Okay. And what do you feel is missing when it comes to public art in Brentwood? What do you miss?
Well, I personally, I, I would like to see more murals, you know, I've seen the murals in Oakland, and San Francisco, and those many other places, and I really enjoy those, um, that type of artwork, and I just, I've been working, or talking with, um, Sage Lauren, who's, uh, director of 333 Arts, which has, um, done a lot of, uh, public murals in the East Bay area, and it's not that expensive, if you work with a, a business owner, if they're supportive, to, to, you know, implement a new mural, maybe like a thousand bucks, if you're saying so. I would like to see more murals, uh, places like commercial buildings, technical buildings, um, things like the library, you know, even on Highway Four, you know, bridges and sound walls, uh, there's a lot of new developments in Soundwall, and which could be great, you know, if there's more murals up, and like I said, it's, you know, unless you have to be publicly funded, you know, we, we can get donations from, you know, the, the owner of the property, or, you know, we can do a fundraising, um, project for them, and that's something the Art Guild of Delta would support, um, you know, we do that kind of project, and, uh, you know, working also with, you know, Liberty High School, and they're bought a, a group, you know, that's a big group of artists. I'd like to see something where both, we have children as well as adults, you know, working on a project like that, because that really would, you know, given we're past the pandemic, that, you know, kind of brings the community together, you know, and you have somebody who's like professional artist sort of leading the project, but you have, you know, other people involved, so that's one area that I really like to see some more, uh, art.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Hello, Mr. Littman.
Hello.
How you doing, sir? Uh, so I got a long question here, um, this position requires a commitment to attend monthly meetings on the third Wednesday of each month, and a subcommittee meeting as necessary. Do you have any conflict that would make it difficult for you to serve as a commissioner?
No, I'm retired, so I have lots of time, and, you know, like I said, I belong to Art Guild of Delta, and, um, you know, I enjoy, I do a lot of work for them, you know, and, you know, I want to do more in terms of community service, so that's why I was interested in doing it, you know, it combines my love of art, you know, with my love of doing, you know, things for the community, and, um, you know, I like meeting new people, so, yeah, it wouldn't be a problem, I already attend some meetings for the Art Guild, and actually, since I'm president, I'm running most of them, so, you know, uh, I already attended the Arts Commission meeting, I guess, last evening, and, uh, so, yeah, it wouldn't be a problem, I'd commit myself to that, I'm pretty reliable.
Thank you, Mr. Littman.
Sure.
Mr. Littman, the last question, and, uh, feel free to brag on yourself, this is what you do, and, uh, it, it is this, why do you think you would make a good commissioner?
Well, I'm really passionate about art, I've loved art all my life, um, I was, you know, I didn't take up art until, you know, about twenty years ago, and that was when my mom passed away, and I inherited her art supplies, and I never thought I could do art, you know, even though my mother and sister were artists, and then I tried it, said, hey, I can do this, you know, and, um, so, you know, I took classes, and, uh, you know, just started doing it, and then I kind of stopped for a while, and then we moved here, and I started up again, and I found out about Delta Gallery, Art Guild of Delta, and knowing there was a group of people like me, you know, who kind of most often started later in life to, to do art, you know, and always loved art, and so, you know, I have a passion for art, uh, I try, you know, to, to learn as much as I can on my own, pretty much on top, but I've been pretty successful, you know, I've shown my, uh, paintings at the Delta Gallery for two and a half, three years now, as well as, um, on the public walls of the, uh, Brentwood Community Center, Oakley Library, Los Petanos College, I have a website on Fine Art America, so, and I love going to museums and art galleries, I've been to many, the wife and I have traveled a lot, you know, to Europe, uh, Mexico, Canada, you know, and we, again, always go to museums and galleries, so, been exposed to a lot of art, a lot of different types of art, and, you know, I'm not an expert, but I know what I like, you know, and, you know, and I, I, I'm interested in a wide variety of art, I'm also interested in theater, and, uh, the Art Guild's have been supporting, uh, the, uh, Coastline Theater Company for the past two years, uh, through our Banner Up program, which raises money for, uh, artists who paint the banners as well as a local charity. We had started supporting the, uh, the Brentwood Library Foundation to, uh, get money to buy art for the library, and then we switched over to get to the Coastline Theater Company, so, you know, I'm interested in supporting the theater, uh, it'd be nice if there was, you know, a permanent place for theater companies like that to, to have their production that didn't cost them an arm and a leg, you know, and maybe, maybe in Brentwood, maybe a regional theater someday, you know, would be good, I, you know, I think, I know Brentwood's a lot, especially for a small, uh, town to support the arts, and, you know, maybe working with other local cities, you know, we could, you know, collaborate on things like a regional theater or something like that, um, so, again, I'm really passionate about it, I'm willing to take the time, you know, and, you know, and support my community.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for applying, so at this time, uh, Bruce Mulder, who is our Parks and Recreation Commissioner, to give you the process from this point forward.
Okay.
Thank you Mayor, uh, good evening Frank, so, uh-
Good evening.
Uh, thank you for your interest in the arts here in Broward, it sounds like you're involved in a lot of different things, um, so, the council is conducting their interviews this evening, and, um, I think the hope is that they will be making a decision, so we'll be in contact with you probably tomorrow, let you know the status of where we're at with, uh, Arts Commission, so thank you again for your interest and your patience this evening, um, and we'll be in touch.
Uh, it's my pleasure, thank you for the time, I appreciate it, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be bringing in Gail Jones, Gail Jones now.
Good evening.
Do you hear me okay? Is, is that working okay?
I can, can you hear me okay?
I hear you beautifully, thank you. Uh, so, again, what we're going to do tonight is each one of the council members are going to ask you a question, and, uh, everyone gets the same exact questions asked to them, uh, so that it's a fair process, and afterwards, we will have our, um, Director of Parks and Rec, Bruce Mulder, uh, let you know what, what the process is from this point forward. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Councilperson Mendoza.
Thank you. Hi Gail, welcome. Um, what do you suggest to solicit more public feedback on the city art projects? How do we get more people involved?
Oh, that's an excellent question. Um, I think that one of the ways to get more people involved is to, uh, reach out to some of the local art groups, we've got several in the area, including the Plin Air Group, and, um, we may be able to get feedback from art groups in other areas. I recently moved from the Sacramento area, and I know a variety of artists there who might be interested in providing feedback and ideas.
Thank you.
Hi Gail.
Hi.
Do you feel it important to work with artists that are local when it comes to public art projects? Why or why not?
Yes and no. Sometimes local artists have exactly what you're interested in, and other times they don't, so I think that it's important to have an open mind, and to be willing to consider, um, artists who are from other areas, as well as local artists, depending on what your needs are for a given art project.
Right, thank you.
I think I lost my question. Oh, there they are. Um, all right, so mine's a, a multi-pronged question- All right, so mine's a multi-pronged question. So I'll read it through and then I may hurry you up through some of it if you start going too long on things, because we want you to answer it all. So do you know how many public art pieces there are in Brentwood? How many have you been to? Which one is your favorite and why? And what do you feel is missing when it comes to public art in Brentwood?
So I am very new to Brentwood. I moved recently in 2018. So I have not been to a lot of the public arts installations. I've been to some of them. I've been to a lot of the parks with my grandkids. And I believe that there's public art in a number of the parks. So I can't give you a good number. And which is my favorite? I can't give you a good answer there either. I am so sorry.
What do you think is missing in Brentwood? And what do you, what kind of public art do you envision coming to Brentwood?
I know that there are some larger pieces over on the other side of town from me. I think that it would be nice to have some large, larger pieces of art in the neighborhoods, in more of the neighborhoods and more different areas. Valfor seems to get quite a bit. I can't say that I've seen all that much in the neighborhoods that I frequent.
All right, thank you.
Gail, I've got a little bit of a long question, but let me get this going. Let me see. This position requires a commitment to attend monthly meetings on the third Wednesday of each month and subcommittee meetings as necessary. Do you have any conflict that would make it difficult for you to serve as a commissioner?
I do not. I do like to take vacations, so occasionally I may not be available. But I have no real conflict.
Thank you.
Okay, Gail, this is your opportunity to brag on yourself. Don't be bashful. This next question is, why do you think you would make a good commissioner?
So I have a variety of skills from various experiences. I spent 30 years in information technology, working as a manager, project manager, programmer, analyst. I met a lot of different people. I worked with a lot of different people and got along with them there. In addition, and at the same time, I also did a lot of volunteer work. So I have been a 4H volunteer. And that included at both the county level and at the local level. I enjoyed working with the kids very much. They were wonderful. I got as much out of 4H, working with them, as they did out of any of my projects. I'm also, or have been, a member of an art artist's club. So I was a member of the Watercolor Club in Sacramento. And as a member, I was their webmaster. I was also co-president. And I attended all of the board meetings, or almost all of them. Occasionally, there was one or two I'd miss. So they considered me a good resource to go to when they needed help with things. I did a lot of research for them. I did some recommendations for them in terms of technology, equipment, and various other things that they were interested in. And as I said, over time, I've worked with a large variety of people doing a bunch of different things. And I'm looking forward to doing some similar things, maybe some different things, for the Brentwood Arts Council.
Thank you very much for the answer.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I will turn it to Bruce Mulder, and he will let you know exactly what the process is from here.
Okay.
All right, so, Gail, so moving forward, the City Council hopes to make a decision, I think, this evening. And then we will be in touch tomorrow, just to let you know the status of your, of the Art Commission position. So again, I really want to thank you for your interest in the Art Commission and public art in Brentwood, and for your time this evening and your patience being in the lobby. So thank you so much, and we'll be in touch as a department and let you know.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I'll now bring in the final applicant for the Arts Commission, Gina Bravo.
Good evening, Gina.
Hi, how are you? Can you guys all hear me?
We can hear you very well.
Okay.
So since you have been in a similar process, this will be somewhat. Again, everyone, everyone, the question. And each council person will ask you a question. And then at the end, we'll turn it to Bruce Mulder to let you know what the rest of the process is from here. And so at this time, I'll turn it to Councilwoman Mendoza to ask her questions.
Hi, Gina, welcome. Your first question is, what do you suggest to solicit more public feedback on the city art projects, like get people more involved? What, I can't hear you. Sorry, I can't hear you. You're muted.
There we go. We're doing the Arts Commission? Yes, okay. Because I had interviewed for a few commissions, so I wasn't sure where we were. Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure, no problem.
Sure, no problem.
What do you suggest to solicit more public?
Can you stop? Gina, do you have another? Are you on something else?
No.
Can you just mute while I ask the question?
Okay.
Okay. What do you suggest to solicit more public feedback on city art projects?
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I think social media is a really good way to engage with the community or any kind of population. And probably just bringing in some more programs and more, I don't know, a little bit more interest. I don't, I've only lived in Brentwood for three and a half years now, but I don't hear a whole lot about what's going on with arts in the community, aside from just the few events that go on. So I just think the city needs to engage with the community a little bit more, whether it be through social media or the news. And, you know, we're not even getting the local paper at homes anymore. So there are going to be challenges there with trying to find some engagement there, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Gina, thank you for joining us. Do you feel it important to work with artists that are local when it comes to public art projects? Why or why not?
I absolutely think it's important. And that goes in all industries. I think it's really important to support local business, especially small business and local artisans. There are a lot of people in this community that are, do care a lot about art. So I think it would be a great opportunity for them to showcase their talents and then maybe get recognition outside the city as well. But I'm not opposed to people coming in from other places either, because there are so many talented artists. And you might find that some are willing to contribute in ways that maybe a local artist can't. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, my multifaceted, um, do you know how many public art pieces there are in Brentwood? How many have you been to? Which one's your favorite and why? And what do you feel is missing when it comes to public art in Brentwood?
I don't know how many pieces of art there are in Brentwood. If I had to guess, I would say it's under 100. My favorite one is the new one downtown, the big mural. I lived in Fremont before I moved here. And I really love art. And I like to go to, like, San Francisco and see street art and murals. There's like alleys in the city that, where there's tons of art. But I think Brentwood definitely needs more public art. That's something that I really missed when I came here, especially with the way... I love Brentwood very much, but everything kind of looks the same. Like, the houses look the same and the streets look the same. So I think it'd be really nice to see a lot more public art. And did I miss anything in your question? No? Okay.
Not really. I was just wondering how many you've been to.
Oh, I've seen, like, the, you know, the boxes. I walk every day in Brentwood. And I try to go to different areas and see more of the community. So I've seen those. I've seen, you know, the statues in some of the parks that we have. And I would love to see more murals, really. It's really missing.
Hello, Gina. Here's my question. There's a position, okay. Okay. This position requires a commitment to attend monthly meetings on the third Wednesday of each month and subcommittee meetings as necessary. Do you have any conflict that would make it difficult for you to serve as a commissioner?
I don't have anything that would conflict with this. I wouldn't have applied if I did. And even since I've applied, I've gotten a full-time job. But my job gets out early enough that it wouldn't conflict with the meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Gina.
Gina, the last, uh, is one that you can about a little bit. Why do you?
I think I would be a good commissioner because I really care about what happens in this community. Like I told you, I've only lived here for three and a half years. But my husband and I bought our home here. And we've really, you know, settled in. And it's really important for me to engage with the community. Prior to COVID-19, I was running my own business out of Brentwood, a mobile yoga instructor, as a yoga instructor. But this is my community and this is my home. And I've established a lot of really great relationships with a lot of people and a lot of businesses. I support local business. And I do as much shopping as I can here in town, restaurants and shops and whatnot. And I just, this is my home now. And I haven't really had that in my adult life. So I just think that my love and appreciation for this community is what makes me a good choice for a commission.
Well, thank you very much.
Joel? Did you want to ask about the Arts Commission?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Gina, if you are. Do you have a preference between the Arts Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission as to the one you would like to serve? You're now muted.
It's interesting, because when I first applied for these commissions, I really thought that I wanted to do the Arts Commission. But then when we went through the interview process and then we had the Parks and Recreation, and then I was actually appointed to that position, I just thought that that was the best fit. Because as I had my business, I worked as a contractor with many cities, the city of Oakley, the city of Fremont, city of Menlo Park, New York, like, all over the area. So I've worked as a contractor in Parks and Recreation in multiple cities. So I have experience there. Also, I spend so much time outside and I actually go to the parks. And, you know, that was something that was really exciting to me when I moved to Brentwood, was to see so much outdoor space for, you know, families in our communities. So I really think that Parks and Rec was the right decision for me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now I'll turn it to, he'll let you know from this point.
All right, Gina, thank you again for being here to interview for the Arts Commission. And the council will see you again. So I appreciate your patience, as you will be now go back to the lobby. But the City Council does plan to make choices this evening for the Arts Commission. And so we plan to let you know where you stand, hopefully tomorrow, with the process. So again, thank you for your interest. Thank you for your patience. And the council, I think, is looking forward to seeing you once again when you interview for the Parks and Rec Commission. So thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciated the opportunity.
Thank you, Gina.
Gina, I'm going to move you.
Gina, I'm going to move you.
Out to the lobby. If for some reason you get disconnected, just sign back in and you'll be in the lobby waiting.
Why wouldn't we have interviewed her for both since we had her on?
If I may answer that question, because the interview, the candidates were selected in a random order for each one of the items. And I, and as I'm looking, surprisingly, she's the first one up for the next, for the next commission. I didn't even see that. But the reason I had turned my camera on right now is, what would normally happen at this point is you would go through and discuss all of the Arts Commission applicants and make a determination who you'd like to appoint through the process that's laid out. But I was thinking a little bit about this. If the council would like, it's your meeting, you can raise the agenda how you'd like. If you'd like to interview the Parks and Recreation candidates now, that would allow you then to hear at least how Ms. Bravo answers questions for that one, if you have a question of where you might want to appoint her. Not required to do, but just an option if you wanted to have the benefit of that in your deliberations.
What would council like to do?
Well, so she's the first one. Could we do her and then come back and then discuss the Art Commission and what we feel? I mean, she's the first one. Could we just interview her so we could see how she does with Parks and Rec? And then after that, go back and discuss the Art Commission?
I don't think that works, because we wouldn't have the benefit of interviewing the other Parks and Rec candidates at that point. We wouldn't know how she compares.
Yeah, but I think we're looking, I mean, for me, we'll be looking at comparing which one she interviewed better for, would be Parks or Recs. I mean, yeah.
But you still have to force ranking your head versus the other ones.
Yeah, that's tough.
Would this give them an opportunity then for the applicants to be done a little bit earlier? I mean, we could certainly do that to be nice to them, you know, and get out of the lobby and be unstressed.
Can we just decide everything at the end? Or do we need to do arts now?
No, I, no, you could decide everything at the end if you'd like. That was, that's an option you do have. It's not, it's just how you want to arrange your agenda. It's all on the agenda. It's not under anything off the agenda. It's just moving, it would be moving the Arts Commission applicants now for their, I'm sorry, the Parks and Recreation Commission applicants now for their interviews. And then once those are done, then you'd move into deliberations on Arts Commission and then Parks and Recreation Commission.
I think that would be nice and considerate for the candidates. I agree. We just go through right now.
Let's do that.
Okay, I'll bring Gina Bravo back in. She's the first interviewee for the Parks and Recreation Commission. And it's just taking a moment to connect.
Mayor, maybe you could remind her to turn her mic off when we're asking our questions?
Yes. That was an interesting thing. Welcome back, Gina. Since we just went through this process, it will be exactly the same thing, only for the park. the Parks and Recreation Commission. And it does sound like you've got your mic muted right now, which is really helpful for us. So if you could continue to do that for questions, that'll be great. And I will turn it to Councilmember Mendoza.
Hello again Gina. Long time no see. Um, Parks and Rec has a wide variety of responsibilities, including reviewing parks for new development. When it comes to the latest parks with new developments, can you explain why you are happy or not happy with the latest submitted park plans? And you can choose whatever, like if you live near a new development that you like or not, which, whatever you like, whichever park you like.
Um, one of my favorite parks here in town is the, um, Monarch Park. I don't know if you guys know where that is, but, um, that's like one of our favorites. All the kids love the built-in slide kind of into the hill. But what's really cool about that park is that you can get onto the trail and go down a little bit. And there's a really cool park right there that has just, it's like all climbing and like kind of obstacle course. It's just a really cool park and not a lot of people know about it, but I'll meet up with friends sometimes and we take the kids from Monarch to the other one. But I just really like that one. And I haven't seen it for myself, but I have been hearing about more like accessible parks that are, um, coming into town and that's really important to me. Thank you.
Well Gina, you've just shared your secret with everyone. You're gonna see everyone at Monarch now. Um, my question and welcome back is, uh, how would you see your role as commissioner when recommending policy and working with the council? What's the collaboration look like?
I'm really new to all of this. Like admittedly, I've never done anything like this. My drive is really just to participate in the community because it matters to me what's going on in this city. So I think my role first and foremost is gonna be to learn and to see how this works. Because I, I don't know, but I'm open to learning and following along and seeing how this all works. I'm not coming in to like disrupt anything or be like, you know, be like, I, I don't have any like strong opinions about anything going on. So I can come in just as a fresh slate and just kind of see what's going on and how I can participate and help.
Great, thank you.
So you've already answered part of my question, which was your favorite park. And, and my, my question's gonna be about what it was with the, the public art. And do you have any idea how many parks we currently have in town? Um, and you say that you go out for a lot of walks. So approximately of, of the amount that you think there are in town, how many do you think you've been to? And what do you think is missing in our park system? That goes for open space, trails and parks.
When I moved to Brentwood, I looked specifically on the website because I heard that there's like so many parks here. So I wanted to see for myself. And at the time, there were about 70. And if I had to guess, just like the art pieces in town, I would say there's probably 100 parks in town. And the one thing, like I walk at least 10,000 steps every single day and I always walk in Brentwood. The one thing the parks in open spaces are missing is trash cans. There are no trash cans anywhere and there is a lot of trash. So that's my, definitely the number one thing that the parks are missing. And, and I could see that there are some safety issues, um, and, you know, issues with homelessness and trash, glass, especially on the trails, there's a lot of trash and glass. And, um, did I answer all of your questions?
What about the park system itself? Not so much the amenities that are there, but what do you think, if, if we're gonna add anything on in our town, what do you think that we would need to add on as an amenity? As a, as a trail, as a, as a facility or a park? What, what do you think we're missing or a variety of things that are missing?
Um, coming from other, you know, living somewhere else, living in several other cities and also working in other cities, um, I feel like Brentwood really has a lot more to offer than a lot of other places. I don't really feel like there's a whole lot missing. Like the first thing that came to mind was the water park, but there is a water park. And we have bike trails and we have walking trails and we have so many parks. So I, I don't know, I can't really think of anything that we're lacking in that way.
All right, thank you.
Hello Gina again. Uh, you actually answered my question at the last one. So obviously I know that you have the time to be a part of the commission. Uh, so you've already answered mine. So Mary, you can go ahead. Thank you Gina.
Gina, uh, my question here, uh, is, is the same. Why do you think you would make a good Parks and Recreation Commissioner?
Like I said before, I've worked, um, on the other side of Parks and Recreation, working as a contractor with so many cities. So I have some insight, um, as a contractor, issues that I've had in the past with, um, you know, recreation leaders that I've had to interact, uh, deal with. So I have, I don't know, I have that other side of it, like working with a city in that way. So I think that makes me a valuable asset. And like I said, um, I'm just coming in trying to learn. I'm trying to participate and engage in my city. It's really important to me. And I don't have any, you know, there was all this controversy with the planning department. It's like because we're worried about, you know, maybe someone has ulterior motives, but I just don't have that. I've just been coming in really just to, just to participate. This is my home and I'm gonna be here for a long time and I want to do whatever I can to make our community better. And, you know, I'm familiar with Parks and Recreation because of my children have taken classes. Um, I haven't had the opportunity to work with the city of Brentwood because when I moved here, I really, I really tried to work with the city of Brentwood and I don't know who was charged at the time, but I was never responded to. So I think, um, I, I just have a little more insight, I think, working as a contractor with cities that somebody else might not have.
Okay, thank you very much for that answer. Uh, and again, at this time, I will turn it to Bruce Mulder and he will let you know what the process will be from here.
All right Gina, um, thank you once again. So, uh, the city council again is doing their interviews this evening and hopes to make decisions for both the Arts Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission. So again, I want to thank you for your time, um, and your patience this evening and for your interest, uh, in the city of Brentwood. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, being in contact soon to let you know the status of the commissions. So thank you so much.
Thank you Gina.
Thank you.
I'll now bring in Kevin Pelts.
Hi Ken, thanks for joining us tonight.
You're welcome. Glad to be here.
Can you hear, can you hear me okay?
Hi Ken, can you hear me all right?
Can hear you well, thank you.
Well good, all right. Perfect.
Uh, you, you've been through a similar process before, uh, so I'll just go, go through it again. Um, you will be asked the same questions that everyone else has been asked, uh, from each of the council members. And, uh, then at the end, um, our director will let you know exactly what the process will be from here. So at this time, I will turn it to Councilperson Mendoza.
Hi Kevin, welcome. Um, Parks and Rec has a wide variety of responsibilities, including reviewing parks for new development. When it comes to the latest parks with new developments, can you explain why you are happy or not happy with the latest submitted park plans and developments? And you can choose whatever one you want, either it's existing or it's, you know, it's on the docket, whatever you like.
Um, yeah, well, you know, I have absolutely no problems being involved in, in planning of the parks. Uh, I also know that naming comes with it where the commission talks and names the parks. Um, you know, I have, I have two young, or two daughters, they're not, they're 13 and 15, but when they're younger, I must say, um, I love being a resident here, being able to go to all the different neighborhood parks. I thought that was a great thing about Brentwood. And it was just wonderful that, you know, uh, on Tuesday, I could take them to this park, uh, we live right here by King Park. And then, you know, the next day, we could go to a different one. Um, it was unique each time and it was just great being, having that available, you know, where we, within a mile or less, actually. I had three different parks that I could go to and take my kids to. So that was a wonderful part of, of them growing up and, uh, having fun with them was being able to, um, go to all the different parks. Um, now that they're older, uh, I mean, like I mentioned, they're 13 and 15 and, um, involved in soccer, um, I've noticed the need that we need more, more fields. Um, I noticed on, uh, on the minutes of the meeting, council meeting, what was it, in 2018 or '19, I can't remember the exact time now, but there was a mention that at the, uh, field draft, that there weren't enough fields with lights and that that was an issue. So, uh, I know not a lot has changed since then. Um, so seeing that we have all these great neighborhood parks, I do see where I can come in. Uh, currently I'm vice president of the Impact Soccer Club where, you know, I can be a liaison between the two. And I really see a need where, uh, you know, we have 1,500 kids, uh, that are signed up to play youth soccer in the, in a non-COVID year, let's put it that way. 400 of which are on the competitive side, but you're playing basically year round. Um, they get two breaks of about three weeks. So there is soccer consistently and there isn't even four more fields, um, with the growth of Brentwood. I know there's gonna be even more of it. There's gonna be more kids playing and as vice president of the league, we're trying to grow impact and make it, make it as big as it can be and great for the youth. And, um, I think having more parks available and more fields, um, would just be a benefit to Brentwood and all the great young athletes that we have in this area. I mean, you, I know also with, uh, travel baseball and pony, it's huge here in Brentwood. So we have a lot of great athletes where, um, like I mentioned, for the youth, we have all these wonderful neighborhood parks. I can see now where, where Brentwood's, we could be a little bit better. Actually, we could be a lot better, a lot of the facilities that we have to offer are teenage and, and older, um, you know, youth to be able to play.
Thank you so much.
Hi Kevin, thanks for joining us. Um, how would you see your role as a commissioner when recommending policy and working with the council?
Well, basically, I'm, I'm very easy to get, get along with. So when figuring out what policy is best and putting something together as commissioners to present to the council, um, I think I'd be a team player, um, obviously can communicate well and, um, would be able to see the, you know, provide what would be benefits of certain policies that we would like to present to the council and have them review. Um, at the same point, if the council comes back and, uh, has questions or rejects it in any way, um, I'd be, you know, be able to work with the, with the commission to, uh, find, find solutions and better ways to make it work so that we can, um, you know, make it, make it a perfect fit for the council and the commission and be able to meet the needs that, what, what we all see. I mean, what, what I think might be good, uh, for one particular, let's say, park or, um, or program that we offer, uh, the council may talk about it and come back with something completely different that we as a commission can talk about. And I think that's what's great to have the relationship of that, of communication and being able to work back and forth and ultimately do what's best for Brentwood. That's why we're all here, right?
Right.
All right, mine's, uh, multi-questions, question. Go through it all and then, and then, uh, you can go back to it. So do you know how many parks we have here in Brentwood? How many have you been to? What's your favorite one and why? And besides soccer fields, what do you feel is missing in our park system? That could be trails, that could be facilities, that could be, um, parks or whatever it is, um, open space. What do you think that we're missing in, in our, um, park system?
Okay. Well, so I, yeah, of all the, the neighbor, all the parks, um, a bit, I'd like to say, no, I haven't, but I've been to a, a large percentage of them. Um, let's see if I can remember. I mean, like I mentioned, we're always here, well, my daughters now, we just use kind of more the open area to go out and do certain exercises or run the trails. Uh, my youngest daughter is into, uh, running now as well. So she, she'll just go off and run and, you know, run, run two, three miles on the trails. Um, so some of my favorite, um, I'm not good with names, but, uh, I can give you the, the names that our family would call them, like the water park over off O'Hara, that had the water, so we call that the water park. I don't know if, you know, that's not the name of it. Um, there's another, you know, they, they, Bluegus. Bluegus, that's it, Bluegus. Yes, uh, um, so obviously I need to research out a little bit more of the names of the parks. I know where the locations and where they are, um, but just, you know, as a family, we, we kind of renamed them just so we could be, you know, know that park and that park. So definitely taking advantage of a lot of them. Um, I'd say, I love, um, Creekside Park over there, um, off Balfour and Arlington, I guess I take Arlington to get to it, but that's a wonderful park. My family's used that for, you know, a lot of different variety of reasons, picnics and things like that. So, um, uh, even my, um, my mother who lives here now, Brela got her to move out here about 10 years ago, she goes walking with her, her friends every Tuesday, um, around, around that park. So I know that's a, a big one for her too. So that's a wonderful park. Um, to answer your second question, yeah, so besides soccer, I know, um, there's a question that was sent out, uh, last year or a little over a year, um, to the public. And I know pickleball was one that came back too, that, you know, the, um, that the senior citizens, you know, won a pickleball court and there's something like that for that. So I think that would be great to have something to meet their needs. Um, you know, I envision, when you look at different cities, I mean, Dublin has Fallon Park, um, you know, Walnut Creek has, um, oh, the name's escaping me. But I, I think if, if Brentwood could create a huge park where we have everything, where places to run, um, where they have the different stations where people can do the exercises, uh, we have pickleball, we have softball, we have base, you know, can be used as baseball, we have soccer. I think that would be wonderful if one day Brentwood had that available to its residents where you can just go and it's literally, everything is there that you could need, uh, or want. So we can meet the need of every, every citizen and whatever their interest is, not just, you know, have one, you know, one big soccer complex. I know that's not ideal for the, it's ideal for the youth, you know, for the soccer players, but doesn't meet the need, needs of everyone. So there could be something that we could just have everything all encompassing. Obviously, that would be huge for the city of Brentwood.
And do you, do you know how many parks we have here in our town?
Oh, uh, I don't know the exact number. I know, well, it's, it's over 250 acres, it's about, well over 100 parks.
Okay, great.
Hello Kevin. Uh, here's my question. This position requires a commitment to attend monthly meetings on the fourth Thursday of each month and, uh, subcommittee meetings as necessary. Do you have any conflicts that would, uh, make it difficult for you to be able to be a commissioner?
None whatsoever, nope.
Okay. Fast question. See, I like that, fast answer. Thank you Kevin.
Well, and I've been talking to, I know some of my answers are probably long-winded and not just, I get going and I don't stop, so.
Oh, no, 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 you're doing great. Don't, don't take it as that, it's just, you got time, you got time.
That's right, that's right.
All right, thank you Kevin.
You're welcome.
Okay Kevin, uh, this is the last question and, uh, don't be bashful, brag on yourself a little bit with this. Why do you think that you would be a good commissioner?
Well, you know, I've always wanted to get involved in city government and for, you know, whatever reason through the years, I mean, my wife and I, we've lived here in Brentwood for 20 years, moved here over 20 years now, moved here right after college. And, um, it's, it's always been something that I've wanted to do. And now just, you know, seeing these open openings, I was like, now is the time to do it. Um, and why Parks and Rec, uh, is just because of how great Parks and Rec has been for our family. You know, um, through the years, my daughters have done ballet, uh, they did basketball, uh, they did... uh, they did, um, the, uh, squirrel softball, which I even coached them in. You know, my wife and I did coed softball, I did the men's adult league softball. So just, uh, in, in the whole experience from the umpires to staff, every, everything has been remarkable. So, um, you know, I can't say enough about what, uh, what Parks and Rec has been and how wonderful it's been to raise a family in this community and how important it was, uh, to, to have that access. And, you know, having the planning or the, the guy, the city guide come out and just knowing, hey, what do we want to do this spring? Let's do this and this and this. And that was just wonderful. So, um, like I said, I've always wanted to get involved in city government and, uh, now it, it was just the perfect time. And also being president of, uh, or vice president of the Impact Soccer, this is just another way where I can be a liaison between the two and, uh, really, you know, hopefully be a, a, a great liaison and, and something that, you know, can, can build, help build the, um, Impact Soccer League and also help the city of Brentwood. I see some areas where, uh, there can be some revenue, um, opportunities, um, as far as tournaments and that, that can, can help the city. And, uh, you know, I don't know if you guys are familiar with, you know, Impact Soccer Club has the Boo Fest. We, obviously we didn't have this last year, but two thousand nineteen was our biggest year ever. We had, I want to say a hundred and thirty-two teams that come out and play in that tournament, just a weekend tournament where everyone dresses up for Halloween. So, um, you know, I remember talking to a gentleman, I believe he was from Santa Rosa, and he loves Sunset Park. He said, "This is amazing that you guys have something like this." And, uh, you know, we had, we had teams all the way from down south to Fresno, all the way to the north bay, like I mentioned. So, you know, they stayed in the local hotels, obviously they're eating out. So, um, you know, it was a huge success. We actually turned teams away and the reason being is we didn't have enough fields. There were teams that actually wanted to, you know, sign up and we were just like, sorry, we're full. So it was a, a huge success and I could just see that, obviously with Brentwood getting bigger here over, you know, it keeps, it keeps growing, that tournament can get bigger and we can even do more tournaments. So, um, that's what I'm looking to do is just be that liaison and try and create more opportunities like that.
Great. Well, thank you for that answer. Um, that was the last answer. And so at this time, I will turn it over to, uh, Bruce Mulder and he will let you know what the process will be from here. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you Kevin for, um, your interest in the Park and Recreation Commission and for interviewing again this evening. Um, just love to hear, uh, perspective of our residents who are using our parks. And I want to thank you for the dedication to, uh, being involved in our youth sports associations as well. So, um, the city council will be doing their interviews this evening and, um, will be making a recommendation to the mayor. Um, the official appointments will be on Tuesday evening at the council meeting. So, um, but we will let you know probably tomorrow where you stand with the Park and Rec Commission. So, um, again, thank you for your time and your patience this evening and, uh, we'll be in touch.
All right, thank you. Thank you everyone.
I'll now bring in Derek Bullington and then followed by Derek will be Blythe Lind. And the final applicant is not in the waiting room and he rejected the, um, appointment request. So I don't know that he'll be joining us. And it'll be just a few minutes for Derek to refresh into the room. There we go.
Good evening Derek.
Hello again.
Hello again. It's good to see you. Thanks for being here tonight. Uh, this is going to be, uh, similar to the process you've been through before. Uh, you will be asked the same exact questions that everyone else has been asked.
All right.
Each, uh, council person will ask you a question. And then at the end, uh, we will have our, uh, director of Parks and Rec, uh, let you know what the process will be from there.
Okay.
And so, can you hear me okay? I can hear you?
Yeah, I can hear you great, yeah.
Okay, great. So at this time, I'll turn it to, to, uh, council person Mendoza and she'll begin the process.
Thanks.
Hi, welcome. Um, Parks and Rec has a wide variety of responsibilities, including reviewing parks for new development. When it comes to the latest parks and new development, can you explain why you are happy or not with the latest submitted parks? And you can choose any parks you want to talk about that they're already done or maybe they're on the docket, whichever one.
So as far as the parks, um, I've liked about them or what's, um, needs to be, um, upgraded or changed about them, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, like when we, when we're building them around new development, what works and what's not working and you could change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's great that a lot of the new developments have the smaller pocket parts kind of in them where there's, you know, some of the small little green spaces. But, um, I think one of the big things that our Parks and Brentwood need is the, the sports fields and kind of larger accommodations for all the teams and youth sports that are happening. I know, um, I have three kids have gone through soccer and baseball and there's always a need for more fields and having places to play. And, uh, so I think the biggest, um, issue as far as what can be improved upon is more places where there's sports fields, um, kind of like Sunset, how there's those out there, but that's not nearly enough.
Thank you. Before I ask my question, I know council member Rodriguez needs to leave. Would you like to, uh, take your turn now? Is that okay?
No, I'm okay. I, I, I was thinking about six fifteen, but I might stay until six thirty. The meeting starts at six. I can, I'm okay, but I appreciate that, council member.
Hi Derek.
Hey, how you doing?
Um, how do you see, how would you see your role as commissioner when recommending policy and working with the council?
Uh, well, as far as my role, I, uh, I've lived in Brentwood about twenty years now. I have, uh, three kids here in high school, middle school and elementary school. And we've grown up, uh, they've grown up here at least in the parks programs and being a part of, uh, the Park and Rec system and going through different, uh, sports groups and swimming and things like that. So I think as far as my role, I have a lot of experience as far as being a user of the parks and participating in that, uh, way. I also am a teacher here in the school, uh, at Adams Middle School. So I have a lot of interaction with a lot of the kids, um, in that capacity as well and things that they're looking for. So I think I want to kind of have my ear to the ground on the side of the kid's side of the, um, what's happening here in Brentwood. So, um, I know that parks are used by people of all ages as well, not just the kids. So, you know, whether it's for, uh, pickleball, which seems to be really exciting for some people and all the other things. But, uh, I think just having a, a voice, um, that represents kind of the families in Brentwood and what their desires are, um, for our Parks and Rec, uh, system here in the city.
Great, thank you.
Evening Derek, how are you?
Hello, I'm good, thanks.
So, mine's a, a multi-faceted question. Do you know how many parks there are in Brentwood? How many have you been to? Which is your favorite and why? And other than the sports fields, is, what do you feel is missing in our park system? It could be trails, it could be open space, it could be facilities.
Um, my favorite park I think is, um, the one that was built over off of, I think it's called Adams Street, um, that has like the big giant barn that's there. I don't know what it's called. Oh yeah, Bluegus, yeah. I think it's like the water features. I think anytime we could put water features in parks in Brentwood, that is a plus, um, considering how hot it gets here in the summertime. A lot of the parks I know you can't bring your kids to in the middle of the day, you know, in July, cause they'll get burned if they go down the slide. So anytime there's a water feature, that's great. Um, how many parks are there? I would guess about sixty. I really am not sure. But, um, I know like I look at the Park and Rec guide when it comes every, you know, six months or whenever it is. And you know, it has a listing in the back. So I would guess probably around sixty. Um, and then as far as what's missing, um, Brentwood needs a, a disc golf course. This whole, um, area around Deer Ridge where I live and Shadow Lake that's been abandoned. I know it's not officially abandoned, but would be great for that. So, uh, but a disc golf course is something I know that a lot of people have put time into getting developed and wanting to have happen. And, um, it doesn't take a lot as far as infrastructure, just, um, some baskets and some cement pads really. But, um, I think that's something that could definitely be used here in town.
Great, thank you.
Hello Derek.
Hello again.
Nice. Uh, this position requires a commitment to attend monthly meetings on a fourth Thursday of each month and subcommittee, subcommittee meetings as necessary. Do you have any conflicts that would make you, make it difficult for you to serve as a commissioner?
Uh, currently I do not have any conflicts, no. I, I work as a teacher, so, you know, I get home, when I don't leave my house all day, but no, I get home, uh, uh, you know, at the time would be, that wouldn't be a problem. Um, I have no problem with my kids getting places. My daughter drives it out, so if anybody needs a ride, she's, uh, the official chauffeur. So, um, I don't see any issues with time commitments now.
Thank you Derek, very much.
Well, congratulations Derek, going to having another chauffeur in the house, that's always handy.
Yeah, it's great, it's great.
Um, so the last question is one, uh, don't hold back, uh, it's an opportunity for you to brag on yourself and, and impress everybody. Uh, why do you think that you would be a good commissioner?
Um, I think I'd be a good commissioner. First, like I said, I've, uh, been involved in the park system here for quite a long time, um, with my kids growing up as well as, um, working with the kids here in town. And, uh, I think I'm, uh, very cooperative, easy to get along with as far as working. Um, obviously have my own thoughts and opinions about things, but I'm definitely open-minded and able to listen and, uh, work in kind of a cooperative atmosphere with people. Um, I work, you know, as a, as a teacher in education, you know, you're constantly working with other adults as well as families and people from the public. So I'm used to doing that and being in front of people, uh, on a daily basis. So, um, I was teacher of the year a couple of years ago, I think. Uh, I'm nominated almost every year. Um, like I tell the kids, I have one of the best teachers there. Um, at least hopefully they'll believe that. So, but yeah, I, I think that's a, that should cover that, I guess.
Great. I knew, that's, that's where we've seen you. You've been in front of council in the past as teacher of the year, I believe, as a recipient of one of the awards.
Oh yeah, I've spoken at council meetings on occasion as well.
That's, uh, when I first saw you the last time, I, your face was really familiar. So that, that was weird. Well, at this time, um, I'll turn it to Bruce Mulder and he will let you know what the process will be, uh, for, uh, moving forward. And thank you again.
Okay. One other thing, let me just, I know I'd interviewed before for the planning commission, but I'm gonna withdraw my name for that for the second round of interviews, just so you know. So, um, in case you're, I'll make sure you're the secretary does, but in case I'm not there, whatever that gets scheduled.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right Derek, um, I just want to say thanks again for interviewing this evening and, um, also thank you for the interest you've had in Parks and Recreation and your career, uh, as being an educator, working with our Brentwood youth as well. Very important. So I really appreciate your dedication to the, the city of Brentwood and our youth. Um, so, uh, we're doing our interviews this evening and I think our council, uh, hopes to make decisions for the Park and Rec Commission and make recommendations for approval for the Tuesday evening council meeting coming up. So, uh, we should be in touch, uh, tomorrow with all of our commissioners and letting them know their status. So, again, thank you so much and thank you for your patience this evening. And, uh, we look forward to letting all of our commissioners or our applicants know where they stand, uh, by tomorrow. So thank you so much.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot.
All right, have a great evening.
You too, thanks.
I'll now bring in the final, um, applicant, Blythe Lind. And the other one has not shown up. And again, he did reject the request for the interview appointment.
Hi.
Hi Blythe.
How are you all?
Well, can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
I can hear you well, also.
Great.
So, um, we'll go through what the process is gonna be, uh, tonight. And, uh, you will be asked a question from each of the council members. Uh, you'll be asked exactly the same questions that everyone else has been asked. And at the end, uh, we will have our director, uh, Bruce Mulder, tell you what the process will be from here.
Okay, great.
So at this time, I'll turn it to, uh, council member Mendoza and she'll begin with questions.
Hello. Um, Parks and Rec has a wide variety of responsibilities, including reviewing parks for new development. When it comes to the latest parks with new developments, can you explain why you are happy or not with the latest submitted parks? And you can either choose something that was built recently or something that's on the docket to be built.
Okay. Um, I think, um, I think I'll speak kind of in general with one problem I kind of foresee with some of the parks and that is that they're quite small and we would call those pocket parks. Um, or maybe it would just have, uh, we also call them tot lots sometimes. So it would just be, um, a structure for kids two through five. And I just, I guess I have a hard time with those parks because I feel like they don't reach the majority of the community. And I think that, um, as we move forward, we should really look into trying to create larger parks instead of, um, just a bunch of small parks, uh, with the credits that were given from the developer. So I think we've had several, um, smaller parks. And so as we move forward, it'd be great to see us, you know, create something with large fields, um, just something a little different, but, uh, more available to a wide spectrum of families and not just, um, a small group of, um, children.
Great, thank you.
Hi Blythe.
Hi.
My question is, how would you see your role as commissioner when recommending policy and working with the council?
Well, I've been really fortunate. I served three terms on the Parks and Rec Commission prior. Um, so I think I bring to the table some experience. I've learned a lot over those last three terms. Um, I've learned kind of how to work, uh, with council and how to communicate with them. And I know that we are an advisory group. So I think what I bring to the table is I would certainly take the time to look into any matters that we are advising the council on and, um, really back my recommendation up with, um, strong evidence. And then I would hope to turn that over to all of you and, um, let you make your decision based on, um, the facts that I had provided for you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening Blythe, how are you?
I'm good, thank you Karen. How are you?
I'm doing well. So this, this is probably gonna be real easy for you, but, um, and it's multi-questions. Do you know how many parks there are in Brentwood? How many have you been to? Which one's your favorite and why? And what do you feel is missing in our park system with, by, other than, or let's exclude the, uh, large parks and fields, since you already gave that one. And it could be open space, it could be facilities, um, trails, any of them.
Okay, great. Um, well, I, I do not know the exact number of parks that we have, but I know it's well over eighty-five. Um, and I have been to quite a few. Um, I, you know, I've been in this town for almost nineteen years now. And when I started with my little kids, I was their mom and that's what we did. We went out into parks, which is why I got into the first place, is that I wanted to help create new and additional parks as the town grew. Um, I would say that my favorite park is Veterans Park. Um, and I think that while I was on the commission, um, we worked with the Special Kids Foundation, um, to create, uh, the all abilities playground in that park. And it just has a really special place in my heart that we have created an environment, um, where all kids can be included and play together. That's just the best. And in addition to that, I think it's a lovely park. I think it, uh, represents our veterans well. I've been to a few events there in honor of the veterans. And I think it's a wonderful place to hold it and right next to the pool and the skate park. Um, it's just an amazing park. It's great. Um, and as far as things that I think are important to put in parks in the future, um, outside of large parks, um, I definitely think we need some facilities. I would like to see some indoor facilities if possible. Um, I'm well aware that that takes funding and that's hard to come by. Um, but I know that there are lots of tournaments that I personally go to out of town because our, um, city doesn't have the gyms or, um, the space, uh, to hold large tournaments. And I think it would be great to be able to bring other teams and, um, people to our town where they can spend money and stay in our hotels. So I definitely think some great gym facilities are needed. And, um, of course, along the lines with the all- And, um, of course, along the lines with the All Abilities Playground, I'd love to see, uh, more features added to our parks that all, um, children, um, any ability would be able to access. So, I hope that we can always keep trying to integrate or update some of our parks that we have now with features that would be accessible to all children.
Thank you, that was great.
Thanks. Oh, you're on mute, I think.
I keep forgetting. Hello, how you doing?
Good, thanks.
Okay. So, here's my question. This, uh, this position requires a commitment to attend monthly meetings on the fourth Thursday of each month and a subcommittee meeting as necessary. Do you have any conflict that would make it difficult for you to serve as a commissioner?
Uh, I do not have any conflict with that. That would be able to work with my schedule and I, um, actually look forward to being involved in the subcommittees. I know sometimes that works better for people that have, um, more free time. So, I always was looking forward to being involved in that or attending any events I could to represent the commission.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, Blythe, this is the last question. And, uh, this is your opportunity to really let us know all about you. Why do you think that you would be a good commissioner?
Um, I really think that I have a love for the city of Brentwood. I really believe in, um, the fact that citizens should get involved and contribute. So, I'd like to be, um, that person that represents, um, someone who's looking to, you know, continue to uphold the high standards of our city. I think after three terms on the commission, I really, like I said earlier, I've gained some experience in how everything works and, um, everything it entails. And I hope that I would be able to bring that experience to the new members on the commission and share that with them. At the same time, um, you know, hearing all of their new ideas, not being stuck in the past and being open to, um, new discussions and new ideas. Um, and I've just been on several boards, last year being the school board. And, um, I think that that experience in learning how to listen to both sides and how to really, um, spend time with people and listen to them and hear their concerns, I feel like I've, um, gained a lot of experience in that realm and I'd like to bring that to the commission.
Thank you very much for that answer. Uh, so at this time, uh, I'll turn it to Bruce to let you know what the process will be from here. And thank you again for coming today.
Thank you all.
All right, good evening, Blythe. Um, first of all, thank you so much for the service you've had on the Park and Rec Commission in the past and your continued interest in Parks and Recreation, um, your service on the school board, uh, your passion that you bring to the city of Brentwood and to our programs and services. It's really been appreciated, so.
Thank you.
So, I want to just let you know, um, your final interview this evening, so the council will now go into discussion. Um, but the plan is that they will make, uh, recommendations for the city council meeting on Tuesday evening. I think they are hoping to make some decisions this evening. So, uh, as staff, we will reach out to all applicants tomorrow and let them know what their status is, um, so you don't have to wait too long. So, anyway, so, again, thank you for your patience being in the, in the lobby for a long period of time and, uh, we really appreciate that. So, we'll be in contact, uh, by the end of this week as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you all, have a wonderful night, you guys.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, so now that that was the last applicant, uh, I'll open it up, uh, for council to discuss, discuss, discuss the applicants. And we can start with the Arts and Art, well, the Arts Commission. And anybody that would like to start?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Since Vice Mayor Rodriguez needs to leave shortly, um, and it'll take time to go through this, maybe we could do a background of voting and if we come to a consensus without, um, discussion, that way he would be able to participate in both the votes for the Arts Commission and the Park and Rec. Um...
I'm okay with that. Damian, does that check all the boxes for us?
At this point, it's up to the council how you'd like to proceed. So, if you would like to, um, have each council member, uh, provide you with the names of their, their top two candidates from first to last, um, then you can make a determination, uh, you know, who you would like to recommend appointing and then you can do the vote. It just, it would, it would...
Uh, really quick, I would also like, thank you, uh, Council Member Ray for bringing that up. I appreciate that. Uh, so, just to be clear, I mean, I'm trying to look here, but we need three Arts Commission and also three Parks Commission, right?
Two Arts Commissioners.
And three Parks?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor, if you'll give me your, uh, recommendations for Arts and then Park and Rec.
Started off with a bang, huh? All right, I like that, I like that.
And that was the first choice as the first thing, right?
Yes.
So, and, and I'm gonna, uh, if I can, just really quick, um, so for me, number one was Frank, um, Frank Littman. For me, he was number one for the art. I think he did the experience and knowledge that he's coming with, but also, um, yeah, I just think he, you know, he's the man. He got all the resource connections and he loved it. My, my second person was, uh, to be honest, was Gail Jones. Um, I think that she also is very knowledgeable and very good. Um, I think, uh, and then from there, and for me, it wasn't, you know, yeah, so I'll just stick with my two, right? Is that what I have to say?
Yes.
Or all four? Okay, so those are my reasons behind them two.
Okay, and your Parks and Rec?
My Parks and Recs, okay, this one's got a little more. Um, my first one is, um, Blythe. Um, obviously she comes with a welcome, talented experience and actually answered all the questions very well. I really like Gina Bravo, uh, as my second. And the reason behind that is, um, I guess she answered the questions very well, but she comes from a different perspective. She actually worked with cities in regards to, um, being contracted and things like that. But at the same time, I like that she's not coming in with an agenda. She's not coming in with any ties or agendas with anybody. She's just really coming in to be able to do what's right for Brentwood and for our Parks and Recs and our youth and our families. So, I really like that she experiences our parks, been around a lot of parks, worked with park districts, but at the same time, has no hidden agenda or no ties with anybody or coming very open-minded. Uh, my third person, I'll be honest with you, uh, I think both of these are about the same. My only concern around, and I'll, and Mayor, that's why you get paid the big bucks, um, uh, I'm gonna leave it on you, but I, I, I really like Kevin. My only concern with Kevin is, is a lot of the discussion around Kevin was impact soccer, right? A lot of it was impact soccer and I think it's great. Believe me, my son played in impact soccer, so I think it's a great program, great thing. And I, I just hope he's not gonna be biased for that, right? Obviously, that's hard not to do. Um, but I think either one of them, Derek was very good too. They both have a lot of history with our parks. They have kids that have gone through our parks and our parks program. So, I think either one, for me, I'll be honest, I, I ranked them both at three, uh, for me. Uh, I really couldn't choose, but my only concern with Kevin would be is that, um, a lot of his, um, message was around impact and things like that. Uh, maybe, maybe he could do, do it and may not be biased by that. Uh, I'm just not sure. So, for right now, for me, uh, Derek or Kevin would be comfortable for me for number three.
Um, it's, you could possibly rank, rank it, uh, I mean, that is pretty important to, to have your three.
Yeah, like I said, I, I mean, God, leave you, Mayor. Uh, I thought they both did about equal, you know, they have kids and everything else. The only concern, um, like I said, was Kevin. Um, I think in our first go-around, when I was part of this, I think I felt Kevin was, I think there's three positions, one is for one year, right?
Yes.
Okay, I think that, um, I also was comfortable with Kevin doing one year to see where he was at with things, but also I think he'd be great, so I'm gonna stick with that. Um, I know Kevin would do great, so I'll stick with what I, what we, what I did the first time. But I ain't gonna lie, Derek did a wonderful job as well. So, for me, I guess my number three, Mayor, since my back against the wall, no, not really, um, is Kevin. I think he, he'd be great.
And, and so, am I hearing correctly that if necessary, uh, Derek would be number four?
Yes, yes, I think he, he did really good.
Okay.
I'll be honest, they almost have similar stories, you know? They both had daughters, they both went through the program, so a lot of, a lot of good information. So, Mayor, I'm gonna stay on the meeting. I'm just gonna jump on another one and then I'll jump right back in, okay?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll go down, uh, the hypothetical list. Uh, Councilperson Mendoza.
Hi, um, so, my, my one and two are tied, basically. But, um, I would say Kevin. And it's actually for the reasons that Johnny hesitates, I feel like he's a full 360. He is, I would say, a super user of the parks, um, from a user perspective. I think he understood, like, what kind of parks we need going forward. Um, you know, I aligned with him on some of the things that he said. Uh, he also, you know, we also have to be fiscally responsible and he was the only one that talked about financials when it came to parks. Um, 'cause we gotta be solvent. We don't wanna lose our parks and we don't want to have a program that loses money. So, I was super impressed, he's the only one that said that. So, he's my number one. Um, Blythe, again, they're like, neck and neck, Blythe would follow that, and then Derek Bullington.
And for Arts?
Oh, it was Frank and, oh, hold on a second, and Gail.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. For Arts, um, top choice would have to be Frank Littman. He has pretty much everything I, I would look for in an Arts Commission, Commissioner. Uh, I liked that he had done some research. I, I liked that he'd done some community engagement, he's done a lot of volunteer work. I just think it's a perfect fit. My second would be Gail Jones. For, um, I know she's, she's an artist as well. I don't believe she talked about that as much as what I saw on her resume and I was hoping to hear more about that. But, uh, I like her variety of background, um, experiences and I like what she would contribute to this position. So, she is my second. Um, Parks and Rec? My first, and, and I would agree with both of the council members, these are top choices, no doubt. Um, my first would be Blythe Lind, excuse me. Um, I, I agree with a lot of what she was talking about. She knows the language, she knows how to advocate, she understands the planning aspect. I think in a lot of ways, she would be a great, um, mentor for anyone new coming into this who hadn't done the work before. So, I'd like to keep her in place. I think she'd be excellent at that. My second, um, I would say, uh, Kevin Pelts. Um, I, I'd love to, to hear, I took a lot of her involvement in, um, council meetings in the past. He, a few times, had mentioned agenda items from a couple of years ago and, and different council meetings that he'd been a part of. And I appreciate that his involvement, um, i- is beyond Park Rec. He understands how the city works. Um, I, I just wanted to mention, Councilmember Rodriguez, you're not muted, so I've, just in case you are on your other, need to make sure, I think I'm here.
She's muted.
Okay, I thought I heard somebody in the background. Um, so, yeah, Kevin Pelts would be, I, I love his enthusiasm. Um, I think he would bring a lot of energy to this. I'm, I'm super excited about that. And then my third for the one-year term would be Derek Bullington. And, and again, this is a, it was a tight race for me. Um, but I, my, what pulled Kevin ahead of Derek for me was specifically all the mentions about city council and the involvement and the understanding of how that collaboration works. So, the third would be Derek Bullington.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Okay, for Arts, I had Kevin Littman for number one, for all the same reasons everybody else. For number two, I actually had Gina Bravo. She's got a couple of years of, uh, she's got an art degree. Um, and, and you don't need an art degree to be on the Arts Mission, but, um, she was able to talk to me more about the art that was in the town, which the other ones didn't seem to know anything about the art in the town. Um, anyway, uh, so those are my two there. The, uh, Blythe would be my first for, um, the Arts Commission, or for the Park and Rec. I had Derek Bullington, um, as number two. He, he gave an overall discussion of the needs of the park and not focus, and including more sports field, um, and not focus just on soccer. Um, and, uh, and, and he brings that, that knowledge of what teenagers need as a middle school teacher. He, he's in the know with teenagers day in and day out. And I think that's what we're missing, is somebody who can bring that pulse to our, our commission. Um, and then Kevin Pelts, uh, as my number three.
Thank you. And for Arts, uh, I also have Kevin Littman as, as my first.
Frank?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm Frank Littman, I'm sorry. And, um, the second one actually, um, was, let me see here, uh, Tammy Zucker because of the energy that she brought to the interview. Uh, she was very familiar with, uh, the arts downtown. Um, her notes, uh, stated that, you know, she was very interested in being a part of the community. Uh, and so, uh, I, I really like that. So, for me, uh, Tammy Zucker would, was my second for Arts. And for, uh, the Parks and Rec, my first was, uh, Blythe Lind. And my second was Gina Bravo. I really like the fact that she has, not only does she use the parks and the facilities, but she's also had experience on the other side as, as someone who's providing a service, uh, to different Parks and Rec departments. And her, uh, various experience with different cities and Parks and Recs departments, I thought would be, uh, a, a, a great asset because of, of that and because of the fact that, uh, she, I thought she answered the questions very well also. Um, and so, that's, she, she was my, uh, Parks and Rec, she was my second under Blythe. And li- like, like has been said earlier, um, the, the space between, uh, both Derek Bullington and Kevin Pelts is, is very, very, very slim. It's just a very close race. There, I think they would both be excellent, uh, but my third is Kevin Pelts, uh, as well. So, at this time, uh, do we have, I, I know we have, um, I've written these down. Margaret, do you have a spreadsheet that would be able to be shown with these selections? Do you have that? Or should I give these to you?
Yes, I, let me start with Arts. So, hopefully I've got those all in there correctly. If everybody can just let me know if I've got their selections. Do you want me to move on to parks?
Well, I think we can stay here, uh, right now. Um, it looks like Frank Littman was everyone's number one, and Gail Jones was number two and three. Okay, yes, if you could move on to parks now, that would be great. This is certainly more varied. Blythe Lind, everyone chose. Gina Bravo, uh, had two for second. Kevin Pelts, everyone chose. And Derek Bullington was number two or three, or three. Okay, um, now, is there any more discussion that we would like to make before I bring a recommendation, or would you like the recommendation first and then potential discussion?
Recommendation?
Okay, okay. Well, for arts, uh, I, I would recommend to the council to, uh, approve, uh, Mr. Littman and Ms. Jones, uh, for our, our arts commissioners. And Damian, should, should we take a vote on that now and establish that, or how would you like first move forward with that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not sure how you wanted to handle Vice Mayor Rodriguez's absence at this point. If you wanted to wait for him to participate in the vote, um...
I would...
If, if that's the case, it might be appropriate to take a recess until he is, is concluded.
Go ahead, I, I'll be here, I'm always fantastic, so, I could do that, now I don't wanna hold everybody back, I'm sorry about that. So where we at, where we at right now, Mayor?
Okay, so for arts commission, um, I'm recommending, uh, Frank Littleman and Gail Jones as our art commissioners.
Okay.
And, and so, Mr. Mayor, at this point, it would be appropriate if council wants to have any discussion, they can, or you can put forward, uh, your first, uh, recommendation, and then the council could have a vote on that. Um, or if the council, I, I, I was suggesting one at a time, just in case council members may, may not want to support one of the two, but they would want the other one, so it may be easier to do one at a time.
Okay.
After any discussion.
So we'll, I'll present Mr. Frank Littleman as, as the first choice for, uh, the arts commission. If we could have a roll call vote unless there's another question. Okay, if, if we could get a roll call vote for Mr. Littleman?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, the, the second name, um, is Gail Jones for the commission, for the arts commission. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay. Thank you all for that. I think that process worked really well. Um, so we will move into the park and rec recommendation. And the first name, uh, I'm presenting to council is, uh, Blythe Lind. I could get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
And, and these are the two-year terms, or what, 'cause one of them is shorter, right? So what do we do as...
Three-year term.
Oh, what?
They're three-year terms.
Three-year, but one is shorter, right?
One year.
So the one we just did was the three-year term? Okay. So what do we do as, um, are, so can you tell us what you're doing, like, I'm just confused, 'cause what if you, I, I, go ahead and then I'll ask.
Yes, so the, the first two names will be for the three-year position, and the third name will be for the one-year position, uh, and that way, um, any conversation or, or process we can go through with the understanding that the first two votes are for the three-year position. Uh, the second name I'm bringing forward is Gina Bravo, uh, for the second, uh, position. Um, if I could get a roll call vote for that, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
No.
Really quick, what name was that again?
Gina Bravo.
Councilmember Mendoza?
No.
Councilmember Meyer?
No.
Councilmember Rary?
No.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes.
Motion fails, three, uh, two, three?
Okay, so then I will bring for the second position of a three-year, uh, commitment, uh, the name of, uh, Mr. Kevin Pelts. And if I could get a roll call vote for that, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes.
Motion carries, five oh?
Okay, and the third name, uh, that I will bring forward for the one-year, uh, fulfillment of the one-year position would be, uh, Derek Bullington. If I could get a roll call vote for that?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Which one, I'm sorry, which, which one is this again? I'm sorry, ma'am.
Uh, Derek Bullington.
And this is for...
The one-year position.
Okay. So Gina Bravo did not get accepted, right? Because it was a two-three?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, uh, with that, we have, uh, chosen and, uh, all of the positions, uh, as a council for the arts commission as well as the Parks and Rec Commission.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I just may clarify, with regard to the Parks and Recreation Commission, the council's action tonight is to move forward with those names to your next meeting of, uh, February twenty-third for the formal appointment. Tonight was just to move the names forward. With regards to the arts commissioners, they have been appointed this evening, and, and they'll be sworn in at the next, the next arts commission meeting.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, so if there are no more recommendations or, or conversations regarding this tonight, um, if I could get a motion for adjournment, please?
Tell me.
We have a first?
A second, that.
And a second? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you. Well, well done, everyone, I think. Uh, thank you for adjusting your schedule for this, and be safe.
Thank you.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at www webex.com.